It is six o'clock, so we'll call the meeting of the Board of Commissioners for Friday, Thursday, February the 18th. And if we could have our invocation and pledge, we would ask Commissioner Oakwin to give our invocation and Commissioner Tosterson to lead us in the pledge. If you'd stand with me, please.
I pray to Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, this opportunity to gather in this community that you've blessed us to live in. And we pray, Father, your hand will guide us on the bond of deliberations as we go through the night of the county's business. Father, we pray that your protection will be our first responders for all those in our community who are hurting and suffering due to COVID. And I pray, Father, that you would just continue to guide us in all things. It's your name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have three citizens that have signed up to speak tonight. I think two of them are here and one may be caught in traffic on the causeway. So our first speaker tonight is Mr. Julian Smith. If you would come forward, sir, and please state your name for the record.
Let me take this off. I am Julian Smith. I have, my wife and I have enjoyed home in St. Simon's for nearly 30 years. Only two or three of you were on this Board of Commissioners back in 2016 when I spent nearly $20,000 of my own money for billboards and radio and newspaper ads opposing SPOLOST 2016. That SPOLOST passed by only 56% of the vote. That was not much of a mandate. Although we may need a good SPOLOST, SPOLOST 2021 is not a good one because it was hastily cobbled together behind closed doors with the help of special interest groups. Some of those special interest groups have formed a nonprofit corporation called One Glen with a profit-making purpose, quote, "to promote the social welfare specifically by educating voters and supporting policies that advance economic success for individuals and businesses in the state of Georgia," unquote. In other words, the stated purpose of this corporation is not to promote the health, safety, and welfare of our residents and visitors. Let me repeat. Its purpose is, quote, "to advance the economic success of individuals and businesses in Georgia," unquote. And that could mean anything. As a retired university professor who got his start in public relations, let me educate you about the bad education One Glen is offering to our voters. It is not helping your cause. Under the heading Public Safety Project, they list what they call, quote, "a judicial system space needs project," unquote, costing $2 million to address, quote, "future court needs in the future," unquote. What they don't say is that in the future, there will have to be another SPOLOST for 20 or 30 more million dollars to increase the size of the courthouse. Under road improvement projects, they list four projects totaling $13,750,000 for four projects. $6 million to, quote, "assess and design," unquote, improvements to the intersection of Frederica and Sea Island Road and the approaches to that intersection, but nothing about actual construction. $5 million for, quote, "access and right-of-way improvements at intersection of Glencoe Parkway and Canal Road," unquote. One Glen does not tell us how much those improvements will actually cost. There are no construction costs there. $2 million for, quote, "design of four-lane parkway between Spur 25 and Highway 17," unquote. But the One Glen folks say nothing about how much it will cost to actually build nearly four miles of four-lane parkway. $750,000 for, quote, "design only," unquote, of a new gateway to St. Simon's Island that will probably include a huge traffic circle at the intersection of Sea Island and Dimmery Roads and other improvements. How many more SPOLOSTs will it take to build all these so-called improvements? Gentlemen, what were you thinking to put together this SPOLOST so quickly with the new commissioners? I hope the voters will reject this SPOLOST and that you will start holding public hearings to help you put a good SPOLOST referendum on the ballot in November of 2022. Of course, you could simply do the right thing tonight and save the public a lot of trouble and expense by voting to cancel this ill-conceived SPOLOST referendum. I know you don't want to do that. I know you're not going to do that, but I think that would be the decent thing to do. And I have 10 minutes left. I will yield now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. That was a well timed, five minutes. Our next speaker is Mr. Kilgore. If you'll come up and state your name for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity to have these public comments. My name is Jeff Kilgore, resident of Brunswick. And I can't get that to work, so hopefully I can get finished in five minutes. The first topic that I want to talk about is the sheriff's supplemental budget for the six, apparently six vehicles, six officers to patrol for drug interdiction. I think there's no question that what that is a Glen County Police Department agency assignment. I'm absolutely at a loss as to why you gentlemen think that the sheriff should move beyond the role that he's played and his department has played for these many years. His budget, curiously, is this year only $130,000 different from last year, last fiscal year. With all the pandemic, with no courts in session, therefore, no detainees to transport up and down Newcastle Extension, and presumably much fewer deputy hours, much less use of county vehicles, I am at a loss as to why the budget decrease is only a mere $130,000 on a $14 million budget. I think that the sheriff and the judges have been forced to use the modern technology that we own, that Glen County has, in terms of the Odyssey software. I think that you owe it to the taxpayers to go to the judges and tell them that you want them to use that technology prospectively, that they've managed to get by low these many months, last 11 months, without having live trials and courts in session. We should take advantage of what we've learned during that period and to use the current technology to have all hearings, evidentiary hearings, pleadings, bond hearings, everything that can be done short of a trial should be done remotely with the detainee never leaving the detention center, thereby solving your security problem in the courthouse and likely reducing the bill to the taxpayers for something on the order of 20 or 25 million dollars because the security issue is nonexistent if you simply employ the best management techniques. So I would encourage you to work with the sheriff to reduce his budget in accordance with the reduction in his utilization as well as the judges. With regard to SPOLOST, I, like Professor Smith, am a supporter of SPOLOST, just like I'm a supporter of roundabouts. A well-designed, properly constructed roundabout, properly supervised, is something that can be very beneficial to the citizens. I think that if done properly, is something that we should support. Same thing's applicable to SPOLOST. I think conceptually, we went about this, you went about this process in a bit of a rush, and you did not have any direct involvement with citizens. You did not have time to adequately look at budgets, engineering studies, right-of-way acquisition, or the potential for litigation, which is very distinct, not only with regard to Twitty Park, but as well with the stables property at the Frederica and Sea Island intersection. $6 million does not contemplate the delays or the cost of that litigation, nor does it contemplate the right-of-way acquisition cost. But it does contemplate the cost of a significant redo on the sewage, which I think is something that you owe to the citizens of Glen County to tell everyone that Sea Island sewage that's coming up from Sea Island, and everyone's familiar with the odor problem at Sea Island and Frederica, because Sea Island's not properly treating their waste. So with the $6 million, you're going to pass that cost on to the taxpayer. So the taxpayer gets to solve Sea Island's lack of proper treatment of its waste, and they get to charge their residents $250,000 per residence to tap into the proprietary sewage on Sea Island. Now, I'm going to let y'all justify to the citizens why you think that Glen County residents should be subsidizing the Sea Island sewage problem. You looked at that intersect, how much time do I have, sir? God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. Our third speaker is Mr. Hugh Bork. Has he made it?
He's out here. I hope you will allow him to speak later, or perhaps allow me to summarize what he's going to say.
Mr. Smith, I will allow you to summarize if you want to do that now, but when we move past the public comment, we will move past it. So if you want to summarize what he was going to say, I'll allow that.
I don't want to speak for Hugh, but I think the...
And for the record again, Mr. Smith...
I'm sorry, Julian Smith, speaking on behalf or instead of Hugh Bork. Among the things we discussed was regarding the withdrawal of the application for conditional use for the filling station at the shops at Sea Island, the Harris Teeter parking lot. One of the things we discussed was if the applicant was here tonight to ask for this to be withdrawn in person, that you would have made it clear that, of course, they're going to have to go back to the Autumn Planning Commission and start the process all over again. But I think he might also have made the point, and I will make it now, that the applicants for the gas station were not particularly well-served by the community development or planning staff. I've read the emails that went on for months and months between the people representing, basically Harris Teeter, on behalf of the owner of the property. As you know, Harris Teeter doesn't own the property. So there was a lot of confusion. And if you read the email, I sent a few days, yesterday, yesterday morning, to the young lady in Jacksonville who did not know how the process worked, did not know what was going to happen. That is when I suggested they withdraw that application. I hope there will not be another application for a gas station by Harris Teeter. If there is, I think I will play the devil's advocate and speak in favor of how a gas station there will help ruin that site and turn it into something for low-quality, low-price shops and businesses, maybe a good billiard parlor, a tattoo parlor, too, the kinds of things that some people really need. Okay. I'm sorry, Hugh, if I took up your time in this particular way. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for speaking on Mr. Bork's behalf. At this time, we will move into our regular commission items. We have before you commissioners an item proposed to be added to our agenda tonight. Do I hear a motion to add this item?
Mr. Chairman, I propose the motion to add to the item. Item number 5.1, the published consent agenda to accept the FY 2020 Existence to Firefighters' Grant Program COVID-19 Supplemental Award in the amount of $10,383.03 from the Federal Emergency Management Agency.
Okay, sir. And I think Commissioner Oakwin, it's 983, not 383. Okay. Commissioner Oakwin submitted a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to add this to our consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this point, we would have had public hearings on land use involving the CUP 4533 Harris Teeter Fuel Station conditional use permit. That applicant has withdrawn that application. Just for public information, it will be six months before they could begin that process again, and it would be, of course, up to them should they choose to do so. Moving beyond that, we're at our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I made the motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or any item, any one would like to pull? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented. Raise your right hand. That is unanimous. And at this point, we move to appointments. Item number six, consider the appointment of one citizen to serve on the Glen County Blith Island Regional Park Advisory Board representing the District One seat for the unexpired term of Bo Clark, the term being upon appointment and ends June 30, 2021. This being a District One seat... This being a District One seat. Commissioner Tosterson, do you have a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend Danny Hickey for that position and that seat to hold.
All right. Danny Hickey has been nominated by Commissioner Tosterson. There are two other names, Stanley Cruz and Butch Wilder. Is there any objection to the nominee brought forth by Commissioner Tosterson? So is there any one that would like to make another nomination? Hearing none. Those in favor of appointing Danny Hickey to the Blith Island Regional Park Advisory Board, please raise your right hand. That being unanimous. General business. Item number seven, consider authorizing the creation of a traffic enforcement unit within Glendale County Sheriff's Office effective March 1, 2021, and to transfer $163,936 from the general fund balance to pay for the salary benefit and equipment costs in fiscal year 2021. The estimated annual cost for salaries and benefits is $462,487. Sheriff Jump, would you like to come speak to us about that, please?
Thank you, Commissioner, for allowing me to be here tonight. I'm Neil Jump, Sheriff of York County, Glendale County. The proposal that, excuse me, I've came up with and I've discussed around, we're the only county on I-95 from South Carolina to Florida that doesn't have a unit on the interstate patrolling it at any given time, the only one on the I-95 corner. It's not a speed trap agenda, it's an enforcement and educate agenda to get out on the interstate. State troopers don't have enough troopers. They have nine troopers assigned to the Brunswick Post, and they cover three counties. That's not enough to have a trooper down here all the time to try to handle some of the wrecks that Glendale County PD does. The unit I'm proposing to put on the interstate with approval from the commission would not only educate and enforce the traffic laws, but they'd look for drugs, they would look for sex slaves going up and down the interstate, kidnapped children. It's an ongoing effect wherever you look in the United States of these items that don't happen in other places, they're happening right here on this corner on I-95. The visibility that would be out there, if we ran up on a wreck, we'd work it. We wouldn't have to call the county from coming out of their regular zones to come handling it. If it's a major accident, shut down the interstate, that's what the troopers are for, their support agency through the county, and that's what they're doing. I did it for so long. The revenue, people have talked about revenue, who knows what the revenue would be if citations, when they're issued, would go to state court, just like any other citation that is issued by the Glendale County PD or the State Patrol or DNR. Even we are, we have ticket books, so it's nothing new for the sheriff's office to get out there and work traffic. We're just in different colored cars. What I'm proposing is mark Glendale County Sheriff's Office cars to be out, be visible. We're short everywhere around in law enforcement. What we need is the visibility on the interstate to help slow down the traffic. If you've ever been out on the interstate and traveled from here to Jacksonville or here to Savannah, you better get out of the way because somebody at 90 is going to run over you because you're doing 80, and that's too slow.
Sheriff, you said you had no idea about the revenue, the potential revenue that you'd generate. I mean, we got, what does Camden and McIntosh do? Do you know? Do you have any idea about what kind of numbers they are, they produce out there? And I hear what you're saying, I mean, it's in the speed trap, but at the same time, it's money. And what kind of revenue from tickets or whatever?
If they're breaking the law, they have a right to be stopped. If you remember back eight years ago, when I had two guys on the interstate-
Yeah.
For somebody failing to move over and win a tent, they got one of the 10 most wanted off the FBI Most Wanted list, just by being observant to somebody violating a minor traffic offense. We want to support our local brothers and sisters at the Glendale County PD. You figure if you write, it's easy to get out there and write 10 or more tickets, I would say, from past experience, at 90 miles an hour and up. Now, whatever clerk, Brenda Cove, has for the amount of ticket or the revenue for that, that's hers. But at 90 miles an hour, it's time we get their attention. Most of the wrecks on the interstate are caused by people falling asleep at such a speed. Takes three-quarters of a second to react for you to think your brain to mash that brake. You know, wrecks happen, drunks are out there.
I understand that. Do you have any idea what Camden is generating or McIntosh is generating or Chatham or whomever?
I'd hate to speculate what McIntosh is getting. I don't know. I can't say.
We won't hold you.
I do know that we're at a loss of Glendale County by not having some visibility out there and doing our job. And I'm sorry, I don't have an exact number for you.
Commissioner Bronson, I have been told Camden pulls a million six a year off 95, and McIntosh is around a million two.
It is one thing I will do, because I have deputies assigned to DEA and ATF. They're bringing in the gain from the illegal criminals. I'll buy my next set of cars out of my seized funds as it starts dropping. That's my agreement to you, so that the next set of cars don't have to be bought out of citizens' money.
I think, Sheriff, that, you know, this is, for me, the critical idea is the fact that we are shorthanded in law enforcement, and we talk about law enforcement throughout Glendale County, and that the fact that whether it's the Sheriff's Department or Glendale County PD or whoever's working the interstates, we're really shorthanded. So I see it as an opportunity, as you say, to provide more coverage on I-95 in an area that we're not covering right now. And I agree with you, we've got three exits that are in our county. We've got folks that come out on Exit 36 to run up to 39, so they can go to Sam's. We've got people coming from 29, back and forth. The idea that our citizens are using 95 more to get around the county is, I mean, it's a reality. And when we have folks that are traveling down the interstate at 85, 90 miles an hour, and we're not showing any presence at all to, hey, slow down when you're coming through Exit 39, 36, 29, it's an issue that not only affects those traveling, but it affects our citizens as well. And the fact that you're willing to say, hey, I have the ability to work with the DEA and the ATF and be able to be out there to intercept when they give you a tip, I think that's a really significant reason we ought to do it, because right now, as I understand it, when you get those tips, a lot of times, we're having to call one of the neighboring counties.
Or let them slide right through Glendale County and let them get it.
Yeah.
We've lost it.
We've lost it. So I think there's a lot of synergy there, ability to see good policing out on the interstate to complement what Glendale County PD is doing within our community, to add more visibility of police in our community. So I think it's a win-win situation. I appreciate you bringing it forward.
Thank you. I just want what's best for the citizens of Glendale County, to partner with the county PD, to partner with our brothers and sisters, to make Glendale County one of the safest counties that people want to live in and come to visit.
Sheriff Jump, to be clear, so folk would understand, can you hear me? What makes it the best to have the sheriff department do this as opposed to the county police hiring more officers to do this? And I'm saying this, I'm not opposed to this, and I actually have a recommendation for you, I think, after, but if you would answer that, so the citizens will understand why we're not just funding more police officers for the county.
First, I want to emphasize, this isn't a power struggle, okay? This is what's best for the citizens of Glendale County. Good friend, right there in the brand uniform, we've been out there as before, he and I both went up in rain, and we've been in the scuffles, we've been in what we had to do to make everybody safe. The county PD is busy. If you look at their track record, they're busy. They got home burglaries, they got break-ins, they've got mom and daddy disputing each other, got kids that are acting up, their hands are full. I'm offering you the commission, an alternative for them not to have to put somebody out there. Put six deputies out there that are well-trained, put them to work.
And so you're saying that you want to be able to target a particular area and task to allow the Glendale County police to continue to do the things that they do best?
Primary objective is I-95. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, one thing I would suggest is, and I don't know if this is possible or even best, but to continue with the synergy, maybe to create a task force around this or some liaison between not just the county, but also the city police as well.
We all need to partner. I'm not cutting you short, Commissioner, we all need to partner. We all need to be a part of this environment to make everybody safer. The city has great officers, county PD's got great officers, I've got great deputies. Why can't we all get together to make everybody a partner in this? If I might explain how a seizure works, if we were to make a seize of considerable amount of money on the interstate, a dog would come out from the city to do a search or wherever each part of that agency is involved, they get a share of the proceeds. So if we make a big stop, we call the city or the county PD out, they're going to get a share, because they sent a dog out, or because an officer came out who's assigned to a drug task force. Everybody gets a share. I'm not opposed to sharing seized funds, because you can do that for equipment and education. Not opposed to doing that to our agencies around here.
I want to thank you for your cooperation with the Glendale County PD. I spoke with the sheriff, I mean, with the chief today, and, you know, he is excited about the possibilities of the cooperation that y'all have put forth that a lot of the community hasn't seen before, and I think it's wonderful that this opportunity has presented itself. And I thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Sheriff, is it true that a county police officer has jurisdiction in this county only, but a sheriff's deputy can actually go into McIntosh? Their arrest powers are good in any county in Georgia, correct?
And all 159.
Thank you.
Let me address one thing about Glendale County PD. We've seen, we talk about having officers on I-95 or hiring more. Right now, we're budgeted to get to 130. I think right now, we're at 112. I think we have 15 more that are in the process of being hired. But those 130, I mean, that will get us up to speed to cover what we need to cover in Glendale County. I think the sheriff's absolutely right. I mean, we've got a lot going on, and our police officers need to be working on what's going on with inside our borders, primarily with our citizens, not so much on I-95. And as we have not done it when the police force in the past has patrolled I-95, I think this is a good alternative to it.
Sheriff?
Good evening.
Mr. Commissioner.
Couple questions here. What is your staffing level at right now?
Four deputies, we're full.
Okay, you're full staff.
You got to die retired to get a position in the deputy field.
So you're looking for this project for a hire of six?
Yes, sir.
Six more?
Yes, sir.
So that'll, these funds that are collected, courts, so forth like that, they go into the budget of collectible fines and courts, but what is happening with us financially? Because I just, I want to, obviously, something was going on before I arrived here this year. But I was looking at your memo, I just want to see what the budget issues are going to be, because you have a note in here that your budget's been slashed about a half a million for the last two years with no reasonable explanation. I don't want to hang some laundry out here, but I want to be clear what I'm voting for and what's happening and where we're going. So, did that, having that much money cut out, what happened?
They said I was duplicating services by having a member of my staff on with DEA and one on with ATF.
Okay. And those two people run up that $500,000, or that's just what you think it was?
It was cut on two separate occasions.
Okay.
Commissioner, I think what the letter says, over the past eight years, it was cut twice. It was eight years, not two years.
It was cut twice over eight years.
So I know we're in our, everybody's preparing their budget. What's going to be happening with this budget? Budget request going to be coming in from you with an initial six deputies and cars or car?
Yes, sir. I've talked to manager hours about it. We have nothing that we put into the personnel numbers that's put in by HR, so the six, if approved, would be put in to the new budget, and we meet, I think, on March 9th, somewhere in that week of March 9th.
And then this supposed revenue accumulation for doing the safety work out there on the interstate, that comes back into the general fund, that didn't come to your department except for, what is, where does the seizure money go, for example? You're talking about seizures?
It goes to us.
Okay.
After it goes through the system, goes through the court, it comes back to the account as set at South Coast Bank, and it sits there. Then it's used as we see fit. And by law, you can only use it for certain items.
And who is the steward of those funds? Is that your department, or does that come under the county?
County Finance.
So you're hoping also out of this that some of the budget shortages that you've been involved in will kind of balance out with this program in a cycle of funds, so?
And if I may, go back to the seized funds. This audited every year in December by the federal or state agencies that has separated, and this year, I think Ms. Dunigan, is that her correct name, Judy Dunigan, she is the overseer of it. So if we need something as far as equipment, we do a request through them, and it's put back out to us, and we obtain the equipment. The revenue, there again, I can't specify what the revenue would be, but I can assure you, over a year's time, if McIntosh is doing a million one and Camden's doing a million six, we get our feet on the ground and we're going to be quality enforcement, not quantity enforcement.
And those funds, when they're seized, end up, again, getting re-acclimated, everything, they're actually seized and basically going escrow until the case is adjudicated, right? You have no access-
That's correct.
-the county has no access until the disposition of that case. All right, well, thank you for just clarifying some questions.
I had one other, two other questions. So, and I think Commissioner Sposki made a good point about pursuing, you all are able to pursue cross-county lines if you run into a situation with trying to apprehend somebody without any problems versus the county police couldn't pursue across county lines.
No, sir, let me clarify if I will, if you don't mind. Every peace officer in the state of Georgia is certified by the state, by Georgia Post Council to do the job that they're hired to do. It depends on the county regulations and bylaws of what they depend on that agency to do. And it's not uncommon that any agencies, city or county, pursue out their jurisdiction. And from experience of being a trooper for 34 years, I've intercepted many pursuits coming out of the Glen, and once a trooper takes over, then that agency backs off. And you have professional agencies in Glendale County that's not going to abuse their authority nor their power. And once another agency that takes over, then we back off and monitor. But as far as certify, I can go to Dade County right now, and if I see- But as far as certify, I can go to Dade County right now, and if I see something need to be arrested, I'll do it. I can do it. But I will let that sheriff know, I'm in his county, and this is what I saw, and this is what happened.
My last question. There used to be a charitable inmate charitable trust fund at one time. Is that still active? I, I think it was under Judge Alamo, that there were funds put in this trust fund and used for, for projects in the community.
I can't answer that, Commissioner.
Okay, all right.
I can find out for you and let you know.
If you would, please?
I will, yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Sheriff, just one other question, not really related to this, but taking advantage of the opportunity that you're here. When I was running in the campaign, you and I took a tour of the courthouse with a group of reporters, and we found that there were some real issues in the lack of communication. But one of the things that we all saw was the urgent need for security for juvenile court and the main courthouse there. What is the status and, and how are we, how are we moving on that? Because that was sort of an expedient thing.
We were moving at a good pace until COVID hit the jail and the employees, and that kind of put us on the back burner as far as security right at the front desk. I think we're gonna have to bring in a more professional person than I to look at the architectural part. Ideally, we don't need a wall to go up above eight foot, and if you go up above eight, you gotta more, have more structural posts and positions to uphold that. And I think we need to look at an architect to come look and propose a project for us on that. Juvenile court, it's got to get closer. You know, right now, it's at Gloucester, there's a deputy always there at the front desk for security, just like at the big courthouse. When court is going on, there's two deputies there, because you've got to have one for the judge, you've got to have one for the violator and the crime, and the, and the citizens that are there to monitor. My proposal, one day, I hope to get them on the same grounds that, that everything is at, that the big courthouse is at. If we can get all of our judicial judges on campus, we'll be a safer environment. Now, we can't make that happen overnight, thus why we still have to have security at juvenile court. But if we could reorganize the bottom floor of Office Park, I think the Board of Elections addressed a proposal to y'all. What is sad, that I look at, and drug offenders come in and out of, of the juvenile court door. And I'm so grateful that they're getting help. I'm grateful that they won't help. But one bad apple, and they attract a 13-year-old female or 15-year-old boy to get out and do their dirty deeds, is just not cohesive enough for me over there. I want them separated. But I do want Drug Court to be productive. I want the offenders to get help and to have a clean life. I think when they're clean, they have a productive life. Our economy has got to build up around here so they can get a job.
Thank you, Commissioners. One thing I've taken the opportunity to say is, if there's anything that, that I see as our most urgent and critical need, is securing these court situations right away. There's no reason that we shouldn't be taking, you, you had talked about even some minimal efforts that could be done. I mean, when we have a, a whole pothole in the road, we send public works, if it's in a major artery, we've sent public works out right away to take care of that. This is, this is worse than a pothole. And I've just kind of been waiting to hear, and looking to hear where we were at on that, and, and I just think one of the most pressing concerns that we have is this lack of security for our judges, especially in juvenile court and over in the courthouse. And I would like to see us move expediently to rectify that issue, whatever it is. We, we have good general fund reserves, and the life and security of the people in both of those courthouses is at risk. And we, we need to jump on this. Hope Sheriff that you will follow up from this conversation.
I will.
Get with Mr. Hours, and, and let's don't wait till tomorrow to get some security infrastructure put in.
If I may. We had one company that was willing and ready to go, and then all of a sudden, they backed out. And I don't know the reason they chose to back out, whether the project was too big for them, whether they underbid what they thought was sufficient enough, but it's apparent that I don't need to go their direction again. We need to look at and evaluate it and move forward.
The juvenile judges parking lot needs to be secured. I mean, moving takes time, but there's some immediate things that can be done, and we talked about some bulletproof wall glass back there behind the deputies to prevent further egress.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to authorize creation of traffic enforcement unit with the Glen County Sheriff's Office effective March 1st, 2021, and transfer 163,936 from the general fund, fund balance to pay for the salary benefits and equipment costs for FY 2021.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise a right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, thank you, Sheriff. Thank you for coming tonight.
Commissioner Moak, I'll get that answer for you. Item number eight is to consider authorizing the chairman to sign a declaration in the
matter of Whiz-Awe Partners II et al. versus Commissioner of Internal Revenue. Mr. Monford, would you give us a update on that, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. This item is a potential piece of property out by Ratliff Road. It's about 54 acres, give or take, that is presently under a conservation easement. The IRS has challenged the owners, property owners, on that conservation easement. We are not a party to the case, Glen County's not. However, you have been asked to sign a declaration stating that Glen County is not currently condemning that property, and has, currently has no plans to condemn the property. That would be used in an effort, in the case, in an effort to help the property owners with their, with their case with the IRS. The, the issue in that case is essentially that, you know, they're challenging what would happen if the county did condemn the property, what would happen to those interests, and that would essentially moot the case. This is a request that, you know, you don't have to honor, but, you know, we have no legal objection if you decide to do so. It's more at your discretion to do that. But it is a request that's come to y'all. You did do this for another property back in?
I see no downside for the county.
But then, could I hear a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the chairman of the Board of Commissioners to sign a declaration in the matter of Whiz-Awe Partners II ET versus Commissioner of Internal Revenue.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise a right hand. And that is unanimous. Item number nine, consider awarding the proposal for cloud-based short-term rental software and services to manage the short-term rental ordinance in lodging revs in an amount not to exceed $76,380 annually, with a one-year option to renew and increase revenues and expenditures in the Accommodation Excise Tax Fund in the amount of $19,095. And consider adopting an amendment to Section 2-31-16 of the Code of Ordinances to change the effective date of the short-term rental ordinance to July 1, 2021, and for other related purposes.
Good evening, Commissioners. Deborah Bragdon, interim IT Director at Glen County. Last year, the Board of Commissioners approved the short-term rental ordinance in October, and in December, the board approved staff to go out for proposals for short-term rentals. And we got the proposals back in in January, and four vendors submitted proposals. Finance, ITN, Community Development reviewed the proposals for company experience, general requirements, and the services that we requested. Demos were presented by the top two proposals, and Lodging Rev was the high-scoring vendor, and the one that we thought would be the best fit for Glen County. They met all of the requirements that we had in our proposal, and we checked references on Lodging Rev, and they came back favorable. I spoke to two people in Fayette County. They said they were very impressed with the support. Lodging Rev's gonna give us our own account manager, and that they also liked the system, said it was easy to use, and they, they were very favorable about it. And we also spoke to somebody in California, in Newport Beach, and in Dallas, Texas, and they all had very good things to say about Lodging Rev. Let's see, Lodging Rev offers a full array of services in short-term rentals and compliances with cutting-edge technology. They offer, the offer included detection and compliance services, 24/7 complaint services, online registration and payment processing, automated approval workflows, automated outreach and renewal processing, an interactive web portal, and a really nice dashboard. The amount that Lodging Rev was proposing was 70, what was it, was $76,380. Our finance department has negotiated with them, and so we'd like to amend the motion that we're asking for tonight to, we want to request you to award, request that you award the proposal to Lodging Rev in the amount not to exceed $61,000 annually, with a five-year option to increase revenue and renew, and expenditures in the Accommodation Excise Tax Fund in the amount of $10,167 each for FY 21. And also, after looking at the demonstration from Lodging Rev, and based on their implementation schedule, we really need to ask for you to amend, extend the effective date of the short-term rental ordinance to July 1, 2021. This would give us 10 weeks to configure the system and test it, and that would put us in May and give us like six, eight weeks to train staff and start registering short-term rental owners for certificates. Any questions?
You, you say we, that was a lot of change there, and I'm not going to make the motion, because I can't remember everything you said. But basically, we're going to be online the 1st of June, is that?
1st of June.
July, 1st of July?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. We, um...
I thought the proposal had 1st of...
July 1st is what we're asking to change it to.
Okay, I think the original thing was June, okay. This is the most comprehensive proposal I've ever seen in my six years up here. These people have contingency plans for things I've never even thought about. Commissioner Quinn, if, if the software goes down, they gotta, if the cloud, if the cloud goes away, then they've got, they've got a contingency plan for a contingency plan. And it looks to me, I mean, these are all folks, most of them are CPAs, and, and it looks to me that most of them have worked on the other side of the fence at the county level, and then recognized the opportunity to, for this thing, and, and moved to the other side. So they know where we're coming from and know what our issues are, and I, I think that's, that's real important. I, I was just amazed at the, let me find the number here, inquiries, advertisements of 4,526 advertisers this year for short-term rentals, and with 48 of them or something more coming in this month. And, I mean, they're looking at managing about 3,300, something like that, is their projection of short-term?
Yeah, I think it was 3,300, but they said unique, the unique ones would be about 1,700, they estimated.
Yeah, yeah. Average daily rent of $272.61, times a pretty good number there. But again, you know, this isn't about raising money, it's about creating a level playing field, and for our folks that are trying to run a hotel and, and, you know, on an unlevel playing field that are paying their taxes and whatever, so, anyway, that's all I'll say about nothing. But I, I, I was very, very impressed with this proposal, and I would hope we move forward.
And Ms. Bragdon, would you give us the dollar amount, the, the adjustments from the original to the new proposal that you're?
Yes, sir. It was 76,380,000 a year, and that went to 61,000. Let's see. The one-year option went to a five-year option, so we'd be locked in for 61,000, and we have the option to renew for five years. The $19,905, that went to $10,167 each for FY 21.
So this price wouldn't change for five years, is that what you're saying?
We have the option to renew for five years at that price, yes, sir.
And where are Lodging Revs located?
They're in Colorado. They've been in business for about 10 years.
Commissioners, any other questions? And as, and just an informational item there, has the local rental management people looked at this? Has the Board of Realtors looked at this, this agreement? Are they familiar with what, what is potentially coming?
They, they did not see this proposal. They, only the, the members on the evaluating team watched the demos and proposals.
Okay, and, okay.
Mr. Chairman, previous Commissioner Murphy did a huge job in putting this together, and there was certainly a mixed reviews in the real estate community about this, and a lot of concern in neighborhoods to protect the integrity of residences' next short-term rentals. I think this is great that we finally have this. I think it's very extensive, a lot more than I thought, and I, I think we're good, good to go on this, and we'll flesh it out as it goes. The main thing for me is that, A, like Commissioner Brunson said, it levels the playing field for hotels to make sure that these short-term rentals are paying the bed tax, and they're licensed and meeting the obligations. And on the other side of that, it protects the integrity of the neighborhoods and enjoining residents. It really has some meat in there to deal with people that violate the rule, and it gives us the power to suspend those licenses and take away that privilege. So this is long overdue for the island.
And, and Commissioner Fendig, I'm, I'm familiar with the work that, that Commissioner Murphy did, and I know he worked in conjunction with the Board of Realtors and the rental community to get to an excellent proposal. I don't think anybody's against that. I was just wondering if they had reviewed this particular agreement?
Absolutely, they haven't.
Okay. I, I think they're on board with that as well, so I'm, I'm, I was just curious. Commissioners, are any other discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the proposal for the cloud-based short-term rental software and services to manage the short-term rental ordinance to Lodging Revs in the amount not to exceed $61,000 annually, with a five-year option to renew and increase revenues and expenditures in the Accommodation Excise Tax Fund in the amount of $10,165?
67.
$67 for each year, correct?
Each account for FY 21.
Each account for FY 21. And consider adopting an amendment to Section 22-31-16 of the Code of Ordinances to change the effective date of the short-term rental ordinance to July 1, 2021, and for other related purposes.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise a right hand. That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, do we have any items for executive session?
I believe we do, Mr. Chairman. We have an item for personnel. For personnel.
Well, we have a motion going to executive session for matters of personnel.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move into executive session for matters of personnel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before we go into executive session, I'd like for all of us and those that are watching to keep the Dis family, Dr. Bill Dis, all of us know him. He worked for the county after he retired from his veterinary practice. He is in very, very dire condition at Shands, and he's an awfully good man, and has helped an awful lot of people with addictions, and we just need to be in prayer for him and Gail and Brad and Ashley as they are having to deal with a tough situation right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brunson. Could we just have a moment of silence for that family, please? Thank you, and we stand adjourned. Need a motion to come out of executive session?
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I move to come out of executive session.
I've got a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. That's unanimous. Minutes in the record.
I make a motion to approve the executive session minutes of the February 4th, February 11th, and February 16th meetings.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Big no other business to come before the commission tonight. This meeting stands adjourned.